Right at it. Hey, Matt, you can...
So I just wanted to provide some information just for the board. It's strictly just information. I know there's been some questions for board members. I know there have been some questions brought to my attention as well. And people are, you know, looking at what's the plan going to be for returning to school? And what's all going to be included, what isn't? And potentially this option of homeschooling. And I just want to be really clear so that the board understands this. And I think that if, so our community understands it as well. If you homeschool, you are registering as a homeschool setting with the school district. We are then reporting that to the State Department. You are the teacher of record, whoever that parent or the director of that homeschool is. Homeschool students, they can participate in extracurricular activities in the resident in which their house resides. So wherever they're living, whatever district that's in, those activities that that district offers are what are available to you for extracurriculars. So just a scenario. Let's just say you have somebody who lives on the border of Painesville and Eden Valley-Watkins School District. They've traditionally gone to Painesville area schools. They've participated in our activities. If they make the decision, it's time for us to homeschool. That's fine. It's within their rights. They need to let the file their paperwork with the school district. We need to report it to MDE. They then would have access to extracurriculars in Eden Valley-Watkins School because that's where their home is. Okay? The other one that a lot of times gets called, we're going to homeschool, is we are going to go enroll with an online provider in the state of Minnesota. Right now, there are three big ones. There's Minnesota Transitions Academy, which is actually an online charter. There's IQ Academy, which is actually an offshoot of Fergus Falls Public Schools. And then there is an online school that is run by Houston Public Schools in southern Minnesota. All of those are viable options for anybody in the state. People can choose them. But when you choose to use that online provider, what you're actually doing is open enrolling to the charter school, Minnesota Transitions Academy or Connections Academy, or Houston's Public Schools, or Fergus Falls Public Schools. And when you open enroll, then you are also selecting to choose their extracurricular and activities. So I just want to make sure that there's that distinction. We don't right now have students that are open enrolled to other school districts participating in our extracurricular activities. And I do not believe that we should be allowing that. Our extracurriculars are an extension of our classroom. And it's really hard to extend our classroom when the students aren't in our classroom. So you may get questions moving forward. I know that up to this point, there have been some questions. But I just wanted to bring that up. There are a couple handouts on the agenda that I think will clarify it as well. But just know, a lot of times, homeschool and open enrolling to an online provider, sometimes they're used interchangeably. And there is a distinction and a difference. Homeschool, you participate in extracurriculars wherever your house, whatever district your house is in. Online provider, you're open enrolling. You're participating in the extracurriculars that the district that operates that online program, whatever they offer. Okay? Questions at all about those two or...
Yep. I mean, I know that sometimes they get kind of intertwined.
Okay. Second of all, then, let's go on to letter B. Return to Learn Plan 2020. So I did email this out to everybody yesterday. It is also in Drive. The document you should be looking for is PAS Learning Plan 2020. And I'll just start with a little bit of overview. And then from there, I'm going to actually turn it over to Mary and David. And they can kind of walk you through more building specific. So where we're at in the process, obviously, the governor has put out the information along with MDE, with the matrix and kind of how this will look. A lot of it is based on the number of cases on a 14-day look back per 10,000 residents in a county. So Painesville area schools is actually in three counties. We have a little bit in Meeker, a little bit in Candy Ojai, and then the majority of our district is in Stearns County. When we look at those cases, there is a lot of variability between Meeker and Candy Ojai and Meeker and Stearns. Stearns and Candy Ojai are pretty similar for the most part. MDE and Department of Health has been really clear that when you have a district that resides in multiple counties, they want you to use the county with the highest rate of cases per 10,000 residents. So that puts us right now using Stearns County as kind of our matrix or a benchmark. I've been following those cases daily. Usually, the first thing I do after nine o'clock in the morning, I get on the Stearns County COVID-19 portal and I see what the cases and where they're coming in at. The good news is, you know, I think they're trending in the right direction. Right now, we have a tentative plan in place where elementary students would be returning in person five days a week. And secondary students would be coming in a hybrid model. That's right now the classification as to where we would be. Now, we need to, we have a little bit more work to do before we get to the final planning. The couple things that need to happen is, number one, I need to get an appointment with local public health officials. So there's a resource team for each region in the state. And so that's going to, needs to happen. I will get that scheduled. I can't actually make that appointment until after August 24th. That's when those teams are going to start being available. So I will get us in the queue, so to speak, for that and get us so we can speak with the public health officials to review our plan with them. And then from there, we also then need to take into consideration whatever the data says for this week and what the data is looking like for next week. Again, when I look at the data, I do believe our cases per 10,000 is coming, moving down. But I do think right now, it's relatively safe for everybody to start working on the idea that elementary school will be in person five days a week and secondary school will be in a hybrid model. Okay? The other question that I just want to address before I turn it over to David and Mary is, there's a lot of questions about, so does this mean that we have to be ready on a daily basis to get our learning model switched? Personally, I can't believe that that would be the system that the state would believe is in the best interest of kids. At the core of this is, school is not only an important event for kids, but it's also a critical event for those families and what's going on with those families. And I can't imagine what it would be like to have young children and be concerned about, okay, I know where my kids are today, but does that mean tomorrow I might have a different plan? Now, it's one of the questions that I have for our local team when I visit with them. But what I'm really hopeful is that we can at least have a situation where we can assure our parents that this is what the current plan is. And if there's any change to that plan, we would be giving you prior notice. I would really like to be able to say that after August 24th or that week, whenever I can meet with those local health officials, that we could come out and say, this is the plan for the month of September. And then we can, as September gets going, we can give parents more information as we get closer. The last thing I want is to have a system where people are literally every day checking their email or checking their phone to see if school calls and says, oh, now we're going to do this learning plan. That's not conducive to, it's not a good practice for anybody. And I believe the Department of Ed understands that. I believe that the local health officials understand that as well. So I'm really hopeful we'll have something that'll be consistent. And I'm also hopeful, though, that if we can continue to see cases dwindle, that we will be able to transition our secondary building back into in-person, five-days-a-week schools. Now, the caveat to this and what you're going to hear from Mary and David is our system is built on flexibility. Obviously, any family that doesn't feel comfortable having students in school, they can contact us and we will come up with a plan for them to participate in distance learning. We already have had families that have contacted us and we are going to be working with them to come up with that plan. But furthermore, I think it's important to, even in a hybrid model, to have a basis of what we're going to be expecting as a foundation, but also build in flexibility for unique circumstances with each family. And I think David will talk to what that potentially could look like at the secondary building. Okay? So questions about the process, where we're at, or anything up to this point?
So far, I kind of like this. I mean, this thing is moving all the time. And if we pick a certain dates, people, when they hit September, they're going to try and go back to work or are working, trying to work their schedules out. You can't be switching that every week because it'll be detrimental to everything. So I like the idea of maybe each month or whatever you guys decide as a team. So that they're back in school, this is how it's going to work for this period of time. And if we see it change, then you change. But families, it's an entire, entire family deal.
Yeah, and people need consistency.
Yeah, I think so. I agree 100%.
Good. Okay, so with that, I'll turn this over to Mary and David. And they can kind of walk through what the plan looks like at each building. And then we'll come back. And at the end of this document is a chart. And I just want to highlight a couple things in the chart. And of course, we'll answer questions. Mary, David, it's all you.
Sure. So we'll start with the in-person learning because that's where we're at right now with our elementary school. So our kiddos will attend school with us for five days during the week. And our preschool kids will attend as per their registration schedule. So that will run as normal for us, too. Of course, our preschool friends won't be required to wear masks because the mandate says through the age of five. Except if you're in kindergarten, then you have to wear your masks. So students will be in masks throughout the day. Modifications will be made to our daily schedules to provide as much social distancing as possible throughout the day. So we've measured and ordered stickers for our walls for social distancing for six feet in our hallways. We have, I think I ordered 500 stickers to place them as per the six-foot distance that we're required to do. Our PAWS program has been operating using the six-foot distance in our cafeteria. So we kind of know what that looks like. I think that gives us an edge ahead in the game to know that not only, when we put the stickers on the wall, is that followable, but it's also something that works for our kids. We tried the stickers on the floor. That's just a side note. It didn't work. They came off, wore off very quickly. So now we're sticking them on the wall. Students are expected to wear a face mask or a shield as required by the order. I've had several parents call and ask if it matters which type of shield or which type of face mask. And what they were describing to me sounded very applicable and within the parameters of the school's orders. So that'll work. Protective precautions will be implemented during the school day. And students will experience a schedule that promotes good hygiene and limits that viral activity exposure. We've talked a lot about, we originally thought every 90 minutes or so our kiddos would need a break. And now we're thinking it's more like 60. You know, that opportunity to have a snack and take the mask off or schedule an extra recess for them to go outside. Many of the questions that I've been fielding in the office have dealt with. Are you canceling recess? Are you canceling fay-in? We're going forward with those. We're actually planning as much outdoor time as we can so that our kiddos can take those masks off. Any questions about what in-person learning looks like?
How will you adjust when you can't go outside when the weather is...
Sure. Our spaces are such that we have big spaces for that. Like I said, we can promote a snack break. We typically get outside most of the time. There are very limited times when we cannot do that. Otherwise, we have to adhere to the law. Our cafeteria is large. Our gymnasium is large. So we have some opportunities there. And keep in mind that the law has requirements and recommendations. And it says as much as is feasible. So if we're feeling like it's not good for our kids to have those masks on and it's, you know, 60 below zero wind chill, we may say, hey, let's go to the gym with your small classroom and spread out as far as we can and give you that mask break. I mean, I think we have to be realistic for what's good for kids, too. Not, of course, in a room this size, but when we've got the space, let's do that. Good question.
So when you actually get rolling, I'm assured the way we have everything else set up, you might be done with the first or second day and find out there is an issue. Something is that we're going to be in a position, we can just shift and move, right?
Absolutely. Yeah. That's what our goal is, is to be prepared no matter what happens. And then the CDC and MDH, MDE are providing some really nice flow charts. I assume you're referring to if a student comes in contact with COVID or has symptoms or a staff member has symptoms.
No, I'm just talking, what if you get in the first day and every mask is sitting on the floor or sitting somewhere else? How are you going to make a move?
Right.
Because we all think this is what it is.
Right. We've had some really good discussions with our building leadership teams. We've been meeting weekly for the past few weeks and we've talked about that. And we believe that with adequate preparation and with just teaching our kids the basic routines of the day in the school year, we teach them that this is what mask wearing looks like. And here's kind of what we expect and here's how the routine will go, that it'll just become a natural part of their day. Obviously, if it's not, we have plans in place and we have support teams in place to help and find out what we can do for those individual kiddos that might have done well in church or with their family and all of a sudden they get into school and it's too much, too many people, too many masks. It's scary or whatever. Yeah. The staff is really good about thinking about those kinds of issues.
Yeah, it's going to be a new frontier totally.
Yeah, we can't predict everything, right? Right. Go for it, Mr. Orland.
All right. So the high school, grade six through 12, we are, like Mary said, our leadership teams have been meeting weekly. We've had some really, so we meet as a full group. And then we break into our buildings and work on our specific needs. And great conversations with both buildings. And staff has been absolutely wonderful. And they've been really willing to think outside the box and what we can do for our students. So when we look at the hybrid model, we're looking at grade six through 12 and having a 50% capacity. And we talked about how this building is built for a lot more students. But we still run into the issue of how many we can have in a classroom at a time. And so we're looking at really two different scenarios. The first one, the premise is the same for both. So we're looking at half the student body would be here on Mondays and Tuesdays. And then the other half would be here on Wednesday and Thursday. And then Friday would be set aside as a day for students where we would have appointments with teachers. They can come in and work on any labs or projects, interventions, any spread services, professional development, and just making connections with students. So we've looked at whether we would have students come, that come on a Monday and Tuesday. Our first discussion was that Monday would be an A day and Tuesday would be a B day. And then Wednesday and Thursday would be an A day and then a B day. And students would have the option, they would be required to be there a minimum of the two days a week. Then they would have the option to come to school that third day or that fourth day if they wanted to. So they would be able to come in person and/or do a blended learning distance model, distance learning model. And so that means that each student would still have eight classes because there would be an A day and a B day. The other option that we're going to really look at on next week is that instead of having eight classes, that we break it into the first nine weeks of the school year, we would just, would be A days every day. So students would have four classes. And they would concentrate on those four classes for the nine weeks. And so it would be four to five days a week that they would be doing that, which would increase the amount of in-person time per class to two at a minimum instead of one. And then, and then after nine weeks, then we would move into the B side, the B day schedule. So then the next four classes would be the next nine weeks. So essentially, we would be getting a semester of classes in nine weeks. But it would only be four classes. So we've been looking at how that would look with classes that are zero-hour classes, college-level courses, things like that. And we've just had really good feedback from teachers. And we feel that that could be an option that is very viable for us. And then we would, then if we end up moving into a distance learning model in the winter because of the rate of cases that we have, if that goes up, then the distance learning model would automatically be four classes instead of the eight like we did this spring. And what we found with students with distance learning is that students who really struggled with distance learning either didn't do anything or they concentrated on three or four classes and didn't worry about the other ones. And so if we end up in a distance learning model with four classes, that may help us. The other thing with that is between doing the A day and the B day or just the all one, one A day, is that we would, we would cut the amount of interactions. Students wouldn't be interacting with each other in eight different classes. And teachers wouldn't be interacting with all of those students. It would cut that in half. And so we're looking at that as a viable option. So those are the two options. They really, how it's going to work is, the premise is basically the same. But whatever, whichever way we decide to go, that's where we would communicate that with our families. We would, we're looking at, you know, how we're going to dismiss students at the end of the day. We're going to be changing our busing pickup. At the end of the day, it's going to be in front of the building. And so we're working with the bus company on staggering dismissal times, looking at how we can control the movement in our hallways. So we're probably going to be adjusting our schedule so that we don't have six minutes or seven minutes in between our classes. That way, we'll cut that down a little bit. And so some of our classes may be a few minutes longer than they normally would. But we are starting 10 minutes later in the day. So we have 10 minutes to kind of play with there. And then we, again, we would also utilize any outdoor spaces that we can, you know, in a 90-minute block. You know, I've told staff, if they feel they need to take their class out to the middle school parking lot for the last 10 minutes and take their masks off and hang out, that's perfectly fine. We'll have our courtyards. We'll have a baseball stadium, a football stadium. And actually, the last couple of times when we've met with our leadership team, we've held our meetings at the baseball stadium. And it's been, it's been really good to be able to do that. So a lot of unknowns, a lot of, you know, we're in a situation where we could go either way. We could end up in person. We could end up distance learning. But I think this hybrid model will, gives us a chance to do both, to transition into either one pretty easily. So we'll just continue to look at that. As far as providing the distance learning, we've been having some really good discussions on that. And we'll use our Google Classroom platform. And we'll be, we'll be working on a model so that teachers aren't having to create two different types of programs for students not in school and students who are in school. We want to kind of streamline it a little bit and make it equitable, but also make sure that what they're getting is the same. And how that looks, it would look a little bit different, but we still want the end result to be the same. Any questions?
Just a little clarification on the A and B schedule. The first one you mentioned.
Yep.
So Monday and Wednesday won't be A schedules.
Yes.
Would they be repeating or would it be two different classes? The first, the Monday people would get the first half and then they'd have to take the second half?
So if we were in that model, then the Monday and Tuesday group, what they, the class would continue. So the students would be in person on Monday and Tuesday. And they would be, they would have the choice to either be in class or not distance learning for that Wednesday, Thursday. And then same thing for the Wednesday, Thursday.
So the class would just continue?
Class would continue.
Now, as I read that, it looks like if every kid decides, and I don't see this happening, but every kid decides that they could all be here for four days a week.
They could.
Yeah.
They could.
Yeah. And we can handle that.
We would, we can handle it. And we're hoping that we can get an idea about how many families are going to have their schedules here three days a week or four days a week or two days a week. And then we can kind of prepare for that overflow. Yeah.
Are we required to take essential workers' kits? Is that, that was last spring, wasn't it?
Yeah, so right now, the way things are set up is, our elementary school is in person. It's five days a week. And our critical care program or that emergency worker program was for students up through fifth grade. So if we ever get to a situation where we have students that are fifth grader younger that aren't five days a week in school, then we are responsible for that childcare service that would need to be provided. But right now, since our elementary school is in person five days a week, we are, we will not be required to provide that critical care worker care. The other thing I just want to piggyback on what Mr. Orland was talking about is one of the pieces of feedback that I think has been a common thread at state survey level. And also some feedback I've heard locally was just the massive amount of communication with the number of different teachers and how can we streamline that as we get better at this? And I think that, to me, that is a wonderful piece of feedback. But when Mr. Orland's talking about taking quarter one and making that all A days, I look at it from a student's perspective as, you know, rather than having to worry about eight classes, I'm just focusing on four classes. Now, there could be a downside to that because if your schedule is, your A days is just a real bearcat and you've got three college classes and a lot of, you know, high-demand work, yeah, first quarter can really maybe be difficult compared to maybe second quarter. But I think that really does streamline that amount of communication that, and it just allows a little more focus. And the other thing, district-wide, taking, working on that same message, the other thing that we learned is, you know, we have Google Apps for Education. And I think the message is being clearly shared that it's critical for all of our classroom teachers. Google Classroom is going to be our mode of communication. We can't have a grade level doing this type of communication or a grade level doing that. We all just, if you're part of Painesville system, it's Google Classroom. It gives parents one place to go. Doesn't matter if you have a kindergarten student or if you have a senior in high school. You've got one place to go and that's Painesville's Google Classroom. So we're hoping that there are some of those modifications that are coming out in our planning as well so that we have heard what that feedback was. And I think it's very legitimate. And it's our job now to figure out how can we streamline that communication and make it a little more succinct and a little more clear so people aren't trying to find information from four or five different sources. It's all in one space. Other questions?
I do like the second option. To me, when I went from high school to college, the biggest difference and one of the blessings was fewer classes, shorter period of time, and you could focus on those.
Well, and it really is kind of the model that a lot of schools, I think St. John's and St. Ben's are using kind of a same, a mod approach. I know there's other colleges that even before the pandemic, that is what their approach is, that you may take one course for six weeks, complete that course, and then move on to your second course and take that for however long. So...
My question about is like the student choice. So what is the timeline that students and families will say, yep, I'll do two days, three days, four days? And what is the flexibility? I asked Matt a little bit about this, too, on flexibility. You know, I don't think families and students maybe understand what it's going to look like. So some might be like, I'm not sending my kids. And then realize, oh, it's not that scary, or vice versa. So what is the, like, do you think there'll be like a grace period? You get to go for a week and try and then...
So I can, I can answer the beginning of that. And I'm sure, Mr. Orland, you probably have more thoughts on it as well. So first of all, by executive order, every family has the right to choose distance learning at any time. So we can come back and we can propose, you know, elementary schools, five days a week in person. And a person can go to school for the first 12 school days. And they can go and say, you know what, this isn't, this isn't right for me. I want to go distance learning. Everybody has that. Everybody has that right. The thing that I would just advocate for is we will absolutely work and develop a mutual plan for distance learning, but I think we need to then just communicate to families that you're going to stick with this plan now for first quarter. Because we are going to be tied to capacity issues. And we can't plan with certain people opting into distance learning and then two and a half weeks into the first quarter and find out that, no, I want to go and do this now. It can't, that makes it really hard for us to be able to honor these 50% capacities, not only in our school buildings, but on our school buses and, and all those other pieces. So I think going from distance learning to some version of hybrid or in-person, I really feel like we need to just communicate, if you're choosing distance learning, that is your selection for first quarter. At the end of the quarter, you, your selection is open again. You can go back to whatever model we're currently running in, or you can stay in distance learning. But the other side of the coin is if you're going with what the district's proposal is and you want to transition to district, distance learning, you can do that at any point and that is part of the executive order. And David?
Yeah, my thoughts exactly. We, we, we want to make sure that we have, that our numbers are pretty accurate on all of those days. And if we have a class where we do need an overflow, that we can have a staff, that we can staff a different room that those students could be during that hour also. So it is important that we know. And yeah, exactly what you said, we want to, we want to, if they just choose to distance learn, we want a commitment out of that. And then, but the other side, they can, they can go back if they wanted to.
As far as the, the other piece, I think what you're asking, Maggie, is timeline.
Yeah.
You know, we're sitting here on August 11th and so, yeah, the next step in this is tomorrow. If the feeling I'm getting around the room is that this plan sounds like something that people can, can support, then tomorrow, we would like to get this plan out to our families. And then I think it's safe to give the families a little bit of time to talk about it and consider. And then essentially, they're going to get a very quick one-question survey and they're going to tell us, are they coming back with the district's plan? And if so, are they coming two days, three days, or four days if they have secondary students? And if it's elementary, whether they're coming back with the, the district's plan or, or not. But yeah, we need to turn that information around. And, and I would say that, you know, that communication will go out to all families tomorrow. And then probably by the end of this week is when we would see a, a survey going out for people to be able to let us know if they're going to come in the hybrid and the secondary and just do two days, if they're going to come in, opt in for a third or a fourth. But that's the other thing that it will be clearly explained to families. Once they opt in for the third, that means that we're sending the bus for that third day. So it's, it's not, it's flexible in that I can choose a two-day, three-day, or four-day model. It's not flexible in that, well, this week I only want to be there two days, but next week I want to be there three days. It's, once you select your model, then yeah, we're going to send the school bus on, on all those days. And so it'll be important then that people understand, once you've made your selection, that's what the flexibility is.
So I could see that being somewhat of a, I'm just going to stay home today because I can do it online.
Yep.
And like, understanding the reasons why we need to have.
Yep.
Structure on that I think will be important. But I'm for the second model. I think from a risk perspective, that makes the most sense if you're looking at faculty and staff that potentially are at a higher risk, they're interacting with less students, like potentially 50% less. I mean, I can't imagine why we would, I mean, what would be the benefit of doing eight classes? Is every, is it mostly the college courses? Or what would be the?
Well, that was just really just the model that we looked at first.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Is, is everybody seem to be leaning towards the second model, is that, or is that not?
Well, this is kind of a, that's kind of a new discussion that we're having. But so far, I have spoken to some of our staff who have college courses or have classes in which continuity is a big thing for a full year. And those staff have, didn't see an issue with it and felt it was a good, would be a good plan and that we could work through it. So our leadership team is aware of that as a possibility and so we're just kind of moving from there.
So with some of the states potentially getting back to school earlier, are we making a reach out to some of them? Some of the states must have masks, just like we do. Kids are about the same. Well, we, you can read it in the paper and you can read it on the internet, but you sometimes don't know what you're reading anymore. It's not necessarily, I'm wondering if it might be worth just to call to a school or something somewhere where it's active. Maybe we can offset some issues that could arise that we don't know today because the kids aren't here.
And there are some schools in, not too far from here, that are starting early because of construction projects or things like that. So it'll be really good.
Yeah, and I think maybe that'll give you, I don't mean to push you, I know, because I think you guys are doing a great job, but it might be something we could bring in and offset something that we don't have to experience if somebody else has that.
Rochester has a few schools that have started because they're on the 45-day on, 15-off rotation already. And one of their elementary principals joins us again on Tuesday to tell us how it's going. They've been running.
That's what I'm talking about.
They'll be two or three weeks in, they'll be three weeks in by tomorrow. So she said she'd check back with us and let us know how it goes.
Yeah, they might say something that we're taking up and we just totally offset it and we can.
Or the best laid plans, just hit a bump in the road.
That's exactly right. I think you're doing a really good job as a, as a staff, Matt and everybody that's on your teams. We just have to be prepared to do whatever we can. Nobody's been here before. I just want to do the best at it if we can.
Absolutely.
And the last thing I have is, I'm wondering, are we going to be really careful about losing kids in this system? If somebody elects a distance learning, how do we make sure that they're in it? I don't know exactly how we did in the, in the spring, but I also read quite a bit where schools have lost a lot of kids that didn't pick up any learning in the last part of their year. And they would just, and we have people that have, no matter what we say, have internet issues. I mean, you can get out this direction generally and we may tend to send a, our little jetpack out and they might get one bar. Well, one bar isn't going to work very fast, but I want to be really careful we're not losing anybody.
So part of our plan for, before school starts is we're going to be adjusting our open houses. And so we're, the plan is that we're going to assess and benchmark all of our students through eighth grade before school starts and we'll get an idea on where they are. So that will help us. But I, I think, one thing that I think I learned from the distance learning is a student can sit in a classroom and not participate and there's 25 kids in there and you can kind of blend in. But with distance learning, it really, I think teachers would tell you that it was a little easier to see the ones that weren't engaged because you had, they had to actually do something on the computer or, you know. And so I think we did a really good job of trying to reach those kids, but we, we lost kids. I worry about, I worry about students who, you know, didn't participate in distance learning, didn't communicate with us. And now they have March, April, May, and then June, July, August, and where are they going to fall? How are they going to, you know, are they going to come back to school? I really worry about some of those students and, and so we're going to need to really work on our outreach and try to, try to get those kids back, so.
And make a plan for that and, and address it during the week and then on Fridays too. The survey will help us with that when we determine exactly which kiddos won't be joining us full-time.
Other questions?
Obviously, reading the plan, I like the plan and things, you know, it'd be my, before.
Can we just go to the end of, of this? I just want to go and just review this chart a little bit. So on the left-hand side of the chart, these are the eight or nine areas that MDE has offered guidance. And so what you see in here is just simply what Payne'sville area schools will do as we or if we needed to go from one learning mode to another. And I think it gives people a little bit of a sense in what are the differences? How does it become more or less restrictive depending on what learning mode? I think the, the big thing that is, is important to realize is distance learning is going to bring in exactly what Rick is talking about with that childcare piece. That would be something that we would be responsible for. The other thing in all of these plans that we need to realize is food service is being highly scrutinized in this. So even in a situation where our secondary school is starting off with a hybrid model, we will have a plan in place for students that are here two days a week to be able to leave on that second day with food for the three days that they are not in school. Okay? The other thing that the board needs to be aware of is we are also trying to promote our PAW packs as well. We, we got some grant money from the foundation. We, we are planning to kind of ramp up that whole PAW pass. It packs in the past. It was kind of geared a little more towards our elementary building. We are going to be promoting that at our secondary building as well. So in this hybrid scenario, students will be here for sure for two days. On that second day, they'll be leaving with three breakfasts and lunches for, for the remainder of the week. And then if families want to opt into the PAW packs program, we would also have that available as well. So the food service piece is something that is required for any student that is not in school on a scheduled school day, whether it be hybrid learning or distance learning. Okay? A couple of the other practical things, I just want to make sure the board understands, all of our classrooms will have hand sanitizing stations in them. We are experiencing a little bit of a crunch in getting product. And so to start with, our hand sanitizing station will probably be a one-gallon jug of Germex hand sanitizer that people will use. But we do have wall-mounted dispensers. The dispensers are here, it's the product that goes inside of them that is, is a little slow on the delivery. So that is something that will be in, in every classroom as well. Water fountains. Most of our water fountains in both buildings have the capability to do the hand push and put the bottle on, in the bottle fill. All of the hand push will be disabled. The only way you'd be able to use our water fountains in the buildings will be the, with the bottle filler. It's basically touchless in, in order to operate it. The other thing we are looking at is, over the course of the last several years, the district has transitioned a lot of bathroom faucets to either battery or direct-wire sensor for the, the water and soap to come out. We still have some that aren't. And so we are looking at potentially transitioning the rest of those fixtures out to be able to get them to be motion-sensored versus, or battery or hardware versus manual push. So it's, those things are also happening as well. We are partnering with the, the bus company, Payne'sville Motor and Transfer. They've met with Michael a couple of times, so we continue that partnership. We will, he is, has been very open to having the same expectations as far as face coverings are concerned and stuff like that. So I do really think that it will be a consistent message that'll be delivered as far as riding the school bus either to or from. And we're including our, our bus provider in our accounts as far as the face coverings that we're getting from Stearns County or the state of Minnesota, any of those things. So some of that product that we're getting is going to be going over to the bus garage. So we have spares for activities if they're going on a trip somewhere and, and the bus will have spares and, and all the route buses will have spares as well in case somebody forgets or left their mask at school or something like that. And then just a reminder, I think I shared this with you, but the district is buying a mask for every student. We have youth and adult masks coming, one for every student. We are also going to be providing two for every employee and we will also provide a face shield for every employee as well. All of that product is on order. I believe I had the confirmation for the face mask was delivery date of August 24 is the, the delivery date that we're expecting that. So that'll be there shortly. But again, you know, we've talked about this, it was a question on the Facebook Live conversation, you know, can families send a homemade face covering? The answer to that is absolutely yes. You can, if there's one that fits, go ahead. It's not that you need to use one that's provided by school, so.
Well, if they go home, forget theirs. So they show up the next day.
We will have a.
We'll have spares.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have them. They just need to stop in an office and, and we'll have them for them, so.
Yep.
Cleaning and, you know, we are going to be modifying our, our day custodial schedules. They are going to be doing some cleaning of frequent-touch, high-traffic areas, whether you talk about cafeterias or doorknobs, door handles, that type of stuff. Those things are in the process of being modified once we get students back in the building and, and our, having kids back in and our buildings fully populated. Our, our daily custodial schedule is going to be modified in order to be able to hit those high-traffic, high-touch surfaces. All of our classrooms, all of our teachers' classrooms, teacher spaces will be provided with a cleaning kit. We are not requiring our teachers to do any of the cleaning, but they will have product in spray bottles along with the appropriate towels or disposable towels that if they want to spray down their, their desks or their workspace or whatever, all of those will be provided to, to teachers and, or all of our spaces as well. Again, it's not something that we're expecting students or expecting teachers to go and engage in a disinfecting campaign at the end of a class period. But if people aren't more comfortable doing stuff like that, that's something that we will continue to provide those kits for. We are really stressing that they use our product. The last thing I want is a whole bunch of different Target Special hand sanitizer or any of the cleaning products. I really just want it to be our stuff, that we know what's in it, we know what the MSDS requirements are, we know what, what is going on to our equipment and tables and stuff like that. So we are asking to just use our stuff if they go through it. Our custodians will refill and, and get up more. Okay? Then the last thing I just want to touch on is, as far as monitoring students is, in potential cases of this, we are planning to install thermal imaging cameras at two main entrances at the secondary. As you walk by this, it will take the temperature of any person entering our building. The, right now, the executive orders and everything are defining a fever as 104 or higher. That will be the threshold that we will set that camera to give an alert. If that alerts, what will end up happening is a picture of that person and an email will go to our health staff. So our school nurse or school nursing assistant, they will get those. And then what that will do is simply trigger them to go and find that person or student and do a more extensive health interview to see if they're feeling okay or thinking something. Is it foolproof? No, it's not. And I know that a lot of kids are riding on the school bus before they come here, so why, what are we doing on the school bus? We're asking families to work with us. We're asking families to help. But at the end of the day, we are going to be screening any of, any visitor, student, adult, vendor, salesperson, you name it. If they come through our main entrance on a school day during school hours, they are going to have their, their temperature screened. I understand it's not foolproof, it's not going to be a catch-all, but I do believe it's at least a additional line of screening that, that we can try to have in place just to make sure that we are trying to have people that are healthy. And if they aren't, then we want to make sure that they can access the resources that they need. Lastly, talked about transportation. Oh, support services, does not matter what mode of learning we're in. Whether we're in in-person or distance or hybrid, all special education services, individual education plans will be implemented in order to meet those goals, so for those individuals. Access to mental health. for those individuals. Uh, access to mental health services will be available in any of those modes. Um, we talked a little bit about food service and then also, uh, the technology pieces. All of those things are, are part of that. So all of our support services, in our opinion, are fully operational regardless if it's in-person learning or distance learning or any combination of them. Okay? Any questions?
Are you considering doing a second, um, town hall with the Facebook Live that you did? I think, I personally thought it went well. And I think after some of this information goes off, there'll probably be another series of questions. And I thought it was a great format that people can watch again. It might be something considering.
Yeah, so I'm not on Facebook. Um, and I will be perfectly honest with you. It is a, um, it's an intimidating thing to be on something on camera where you can't see, one, what you look like, or two, what the people that are watching are thinking. So, uh, but once I could get over that, um, I've actually heard a lot of very positive, uh, comments and feedback from it. Um, so it was interesting when Mary and David and I were finished, uh, Matt Dickhausen was there as well, running the tech end of things. Uh, we visited about that. And, um, I think the, what we found out is that is absolutely a forum in which our community is willing to, um, listen to and, and participate in. So I think you're spot on. I, I think, uh, that's absolutely, once we, we get, um, this information out, let people think about it a little bit, and then let's go back and we can have another, um, town hall and, and respond to questions and, and stuff like that. I, I, absolutely. Any other questions?
Do we have a plan in place for the, like, a sped student who will not or cannot wear anything over their face?
Yep. Yeah. So again, that's something that, and I don't think it is necessarily something that we're going to be just dealing with that with, uh, special education students. Um, but absolutely, uh, you know, I've, I've had to, I've traded a couple of emails with families that have been emailing and they're concerned and rightfully so. Um, and so, you know, we've traded emails a little bit. And with one of the families, I, I just asked, I said, you know, obviously I, I don't know who your child is, but do they wear a baseball hat? And the response was, well, yeah, they do. Well, maybe we could have a face shield that actually is just connected to a bill of a baseball hat. So it's, it's things like that, that absolutely, I think we can come up with, really, the solutions are only going to be limited by whatever barriers we want to put up. That's the, that's the truth when it comes to this. So as long as we're willing to explore whatever solutions are out there, yeah, I, absolutely. Are we, uh, probably going to have some students that just can't wear a face covering? That very well might be true. And you know what? That's okay. We're gonna, we'll, we'll get through that as well. Um, but I really hope that we can develop the dialogue and develop the conversation with our families that say, you know, let's, I'll pitch in and, and let's, let's try and make this work. And, and hopefully this wearing face coverings and face masks is a short-term deal. Um, but if we do this, we can all get through and, and, uh, get back to days when, when we aren't. Um, who was it that, that said, "We all do better when we all do better"? It's, somebody famous said it. I can't remember who. But I really think that that's really the mentality we're trying to cultivate, is if we all can work together, we all will do better if we're all doing better. And so that's, that's my hope anyway.
We'll make you famous and it came from you.
It didn't, it didn't. I just can't remember who said it.
My thought has been if there's parents watching, if the parents are going to be positive and encouraging about this, it'll work.
Yes.
If the parents are going to be negative and, and it's going to bleed over into the kids, and then it's going to be a problem. So I encourage parents, what, no matter what you think about masks or just whatever, be positive about it and your kids will be positive and it'll work.
And, and I will extend this, this offer to everybody. If, if people are concerned about an aspect of this, if the aspect is masks, or if the aspect is, is, um, the, the hybrid model or, or any of that, by all means, let's, let's chat about it. Let's email. Give me, give me a phone call. Send me an email with your phone number. I will call you. Let's get together. Let's sit down and have a conversation about it. Um, because I really do think that what we're trying to do in my mind is, is very much student-focused and it's trying to be very flexible. It's trying to be reasonable. And most importantly, it's really trying to give families choice. And so let's sit down and have a conversation about what that is and what that can look like for your circumstances. Because that's the other thing. There's, there's all sorts of unique circumstances going on. And to think that we can come up with a plan that's going to work for every single circumstance? We can't do that. But if we're willing to dialogue with each other, if we're willing to talk about, this is what my concern is and this is where it's coming from, I bet David or Mary or myself could have and fix it, or to at least start, um, to find a solution. But let's talk about it. That's step one.
So we're about five minutes left. So do you two have anything yet? Or you probably do?
Well, just in the communication part here, is that where-
Yeah, can we just, that's fine. If we can do that, we do have to be done by six. If we don't get through all of the communications, we can add communications of these people to our August 25th meeting as well.
What's the board allow us to do? Just leave open dialogue right now?
I was just going to mention that, um, we, we have offered the ban position out and, and you'll be getting information on that for the next board meeting. We're, we're excited about the person that we, um, that we have in mind. And, um, so you'll hear about that. And really just building projects are, the building's a mess right now, but I think it's going to come together in a couple of weeks. So-
My were facility updates, things that we're doing at the elementary level, which by the time we see you in two weeks, I can tell you they're finished and hopefully share some pictures with you, um, and just talk a little bit about our enrollment, what that looks like. It can all wait for two weeks.
Matt, you got four minutes.
Right. Well, we're not purchasing anything or doing any renovations for activities right now. We're, um, you may or may not have heard on, um, August 4th, I think it was, State High School League, um, made some modifications for fall season. So across country is the only fall sport that we have or activity going on that will, um, will be going with the State High School League. August 17th is first day of practice. First contest is, um, that we're allowed to have is August 27th. We're only allowed seven contests, um, for the entire season with a maximum of two per week and only three teams at each contest. So, um, we're meeting as a conference on Thursday and, um, that schedule will be reworked. And then at that point, um, communication will go out. Volleyball and football moved to spring. Spring sports were therefore moved to a late spring, uh, probably around May. And then, um, uh, today at 4:36, actually, I got a fall practice season email from the State High School League. So volleyball and football will be allowed 12 practices. Um, no scrimmages, none of that stuff. So, uh, we're still planning on having junior high volleyball and football this fall. State High School League at their board of directors meeting, um, essentially said that they're really only governing the high, uh, high school and that's allowable. Um, our summer strength is now over because of construction on Wednesday and Thursday. We really had no known issues that I'm aware of with that. Um, I was going to share with you some mental health stuff. Cut me off when it's 5:59 or 4:59 or whatever time we got to stop. But essentially, um, last spring, the State High School League asked us to send out a survey to families. If you remember, that communication went out about, uh, kids who lost activities and the impact on the mental health. Um, the quality of life scores in May of 2020 were substantially lower than others. So the conclusion, and literally today, again, I got this information. I've been asking for it from the high school league for a while. I still don't have the actual results of the survey, but I got slides from the doctor who, uh, did the research, I guess. Um, his conclusion is COVID-19-related school closures and sport cancellations appear to be associated with significant negative impacts on the health and wellbeing of Minnesota adolescent athletes. Stakeholders, public health officials, educational policy experts, and school administrators need to fully consider the negative impacts of prolonged school closures and sport cancellations when considering steps to limit the spread of COVID-19 in Minnesota. So I can say from our school standpoint, um, I appreciate that we've been as, um, open as possible for kids to continue to participate. It's extremely important, um, for those of you who have been impacted, um, directly with, whether it's prom or anything, I mean, you name it. When these kids lose these activities, it's a big deal to them and their families. So-
All about there.
Thanks, Matt. That'll do it. Thank you.